So are you? Because of the tides and the manner in which we need to go.
Ready when you are.
It's odd hours, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 12th meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. This evening will be a continuation also of our public hearing on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. First things first, Ms. Deveraux, would you please call, roll?
Wallace?
Present.
Ellen Talbot?
Present.
Philip Lindholm?
Present.
Mark Hare?
Present.
Lynn Larson?
Present.
Philip Combs is excused this evening. Robert Estrada?
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Spear, do we have any agenda updates?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So now it's portion of the meeting, we have public comment. I see no sheet here. Ms. Deveraux, do we have anybody signed up for public comment in person? Ms. Spear, do we have anybody virtually?
There's one person that might be, if there is anyone on the virtual attendance list who would like to testify during public comment rather than the public hearing, please raise your hand. Looks like no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we'll close that portion of our meeting. Public hearing continued on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review is now open. Again, do we have anybody online, I mean virtually, that would like to testify?
And I'll ask one more time if there's anyone in the virtual attendance for the Zoom meeting who'd like to testify as part of the public hearing, please raise your hand. And there is someone on a phone number ending 0072. If you'd like to testify, please speak. All right, Mr. Chair, it looks like there's no one here to testify. What I will say, though, is that the staff received, I think, four sets of comments in writing before the meeting this evening. And what we will be doing is providing you with a summary of all those comments as well as responses before the July 10th meeting.
Okay. So per our public hearing, comprehensive plan review comments. The first individual I have in person is Mr. Darren Stanbys, is that correct? Okay, well, no, no problem then. Well, thank you for coming. Got it, okay. So in that case, we have no one here for the public hearing either, so that portion of our meeting is also closed. Moving on, unfinished business, further discussion of the comprehensive plan, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll share my screen here and continue discussion, a few other things that have come as higher importance based on the information that we've now circulated to the public related specifically to critical area regulation, I'll be spending a little more time on tonight. So just a reminder and for the record, this is a 2024 10-year periodic review package that's in front of you this evening. And it includes a completely reorganized comprehensive plan, which has updated goals, policies, land use zoning, and then background documents and appendices, as well as the audit that was provided in the package for you that clearly outlines what current language is, what's the reason for a change, if there is one, and what the new language might be. It also includes a new 2024 Silicon Woodbrook Subarea Plan, boundary change within the downtown subarea. If you'll recall, Planning Commission members who were here, there were about 10 parcels that were rezoned last year to be Central Business District. And so now we're saying update the boundary on the south end of the subarea plan to incorporate that rezoned parcel bunch. And then also referring to Station District, removing Lakewood Landing. And then within the regulations, as I just mentioned, there are some proposed changes to the critical areas ordinance related to environmental protection. I'll spend a little more time on that this evening. But there's other, a number of other amendments in titles 18A, B, and/or C, which are the citywide regulations. And then 18B is specific to downtown, 18C specific to the Station District. There's the conversation that's been had a couple of times now regarding short-term rental regulations. Some of that came back to you after you made recommendations in '23. The council wanted to get feedback as part of this larger process this year. And then there's information and recommended changes regarding new public noticing requirements that came down from the state. We are at the point of public hearing, so this, as you mentioned, is the continued hearing from last meeting. And it will continue to two weeks from tonight, June 26th. So if anyone would like to submit written comment to that meeting, they need to do so before noon on June 26th. Otherwise, they're welcome to attend in person or remotely to testify. The schedule for remaining work, at this point, the commission is scheduled to take action on July 10th. And then July 22nd is when the City Council would pick this up and hold a series of study sessions. Their public hearing is scheduled for August 19th. And as of now, action at City Council is scheduled for September 16th. We are, as a department, recommending that the effective date of the new package, once it's done, is not 30 days, which is the normal timeframe for them when they adopt an ordinance, but actually to wait until January 1st of 2025 to allow for preparation by the department and the city at large. So one of the other things we didn't spend a whole lot of time on last time was the draft supplemental environmental impact statement. For those of you involved with land use planning, you've probably heard the term EIS or SEIS. But essentially, this is not the Growth Management Act, but under the Environmental Protection Act for the state. Proposed changes to how land may be used or specific projects have to do what is called an environmental impact statement to say, this is coming in, or actually, this is going out, but anyway, land use change. And if that's the case, how is it going to affect the physical natural environment as well as the more generalized term environment, which could be public health and safety? It could be impacts to other infrastructure, could be impacts to people's public or physical health, et cetera. There's a number of criteria. And so as part of this 24 process, the city is putting together a new updated supplemental impact statement for the full comprehensive plan. Again, the scope of the change, coupled with the amount of time since the last time an environmental impact statement for the city's plan was done, is about 10 years. There are two alternatives within that that are being considered. And so both of these are actually something that you, as a commission, could recommend. And then the council could adopt either as-is or with some amendment. First is the no action, which basically says, we're going to not do any of this, we're going to leave our 2023 plan and regulations in place. That is not recommended, and it would actually not comply with the Growth Management Act because of some of the statutory changes that have occurred since 2023. And then also there's an action alternative, which would be the recommended alternative coming from staff. That includes the full update of the plan and the development regulations, the new subarea plan, et cetera. And in part, the reason it's recommended is because it's got compliance with all of the new housing planning that's required, the updated growth targets for both jobs and housing, the updated best available science regulation for environmental protection. And then also looks at the energy and climate change element that was adopted by the city a couple of years ago now and moves those policies and priorities forward. So the impact statement is something that people could come here and testify about. But it is not something that you will forward to the council as a document, as opposed to the regulations and the plan. The environmental impact statement is handled, because it's not, I'm getting really wonky, it's not under the GMA, it's under a different statute. It actually goes a different path after the public hearing. But people are welcome to comment here on the content or whether they prefer action or no action. All of that, they need to give their comments no later than July 3rd. They can come here and testify, as I mentioned, or they can submit comments in writing to my own email, which is here on the slide and in the documents for tonight. And you can also view the draft environmental impact statement at the city's 24 periodic review webpage, which is citioflakewood.us/24periodicreview/.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Go back, please. Since we are basically required to take action, why do we even consider no action?
It's within the State Environmental Policy Act to do so. So it's really form for form's sake, quite frankly.
Okay, and will we be asked to recommend the action alternative then?
No, this is a slightly different item and animal. So people can testify here, and it will be incorporated as public comments about the statement. But you, as a commission, will not be recommending the environmental impact statement forward.
Thank you.
So getting into the actual content of the plan, the comprehensive plan as updated, as well as then some regulatory issues. This is the draft future land use map, which we talked about in a little more detail last time. You have in lighter yellow, the new more unified residential area, and then these darker golden rods, for lack of a better term, with the stars is the higher density housing because of their proximity to transit or planned transit. So within the lighter yellow areas, much of the western side of the city, there's now the ability or the, yes, the ability for property owners to build either middle housing, meaning not just single-family detached, but anything up to a sixplex or different types of tiny houses or courtyard apartments. And then also there's the ability to choose to build up to two accessory dwelling units on the property. If you're in the area that is the darker yellow, that is actually, again, because of proximity to planned transit, where there would be an opportunity, if critical areas or environmental constraints don't limit you, you would be able to actually put up to four middle housing units versus two. And there would be less restriction regarding where people can park or if you have to include parking on your lot, because, again, you're closer to transit. Actually, I'll stop right there and just see if there's any questions on this high-level concept regarding the land use.
Questions?
Okay.
No, thank you.
Then where I'll spend a little bit more time tonight is related to environmental protection and specifically buffers. This is something that, up to this point, has not gotten a lot of public outreach by the city. And so we're trying hard right now to bring the public up to speed on what is being proposed, some of which the city has no discretion about. The best available science is updated since the last time we looked at our shoreline master program and our critical area ordinance. And so as a result, we need to update our regulations to reflect it. But there's one item where we are trying to prepare a third option for the commission to consider when it takes action in a couple of meetings. But right here, you'll see what's in our current shoreline master program. And what it says is, if there is a buffer for shoreline types, which you see in these colored parts of the map on the left-hand side, there is a certain buffer width within which there's either no or there's very limited development allowed. So in the dark kind of olive green around Lake Silicon, Gravely Lake, and American Lake and Lake Louise, it's called shoreline residential. Kind of no surprise there, given the amount of residential construction that predates the city, as well as what continues to happen in those parts of the city now. There is currently a setback and the possibility to reduce the setback buffer of 65 feet. And then if there's additional enhancement to the remaining parts that are undisturbed, that can go down to 50 feet. The same thing applies to what's called urban stream protection, which is essentially for Clover Creek in the southeastern part of the city. Same rules there, 65-foot distance for this buffer and then analysis. And also that could be reduced with enhancement, making something healthier, thicker, or lusher, more protective of the water body itself type of things, down to 50 feet. Urban Park, which is that lighter green that you'll see around Wahop Lake, but then also just a section of Gravely Lake and a couple spots for American Lake, slightly stricter. It's 100-foot buffer down to maybe 75. And then Conservancy, which is in the northern part along Chambers Creek. And Natural, which is again Chambers Creek, but right on the border there with University Place, there is 150-foot buffer right now with no ability to reduce that.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Which entity determined or set these particular setbacks?
These were based on, for sure, it was 2019, information that the city was using to update its shoreline master program. But these, I think, were also influenced by the 2015 version of our critical areas ordinance. So it is frankly out of date, based on best available science as of now, that says these buffers are insufficient for what is required by state, which is no net loss of function of these water bodies as it sits.
Mr. Larson?
As a practical matter, in full disclosure, we live on Clover Creek. And knowing Clover Creek quite well, all the way up to McCord Air Force Base, the norm is more like 25 feet. And so protecting what's already there at the 25-foot level instead of expanding it to 50 feet, which does no good, except if somebody tears a house down, they can't rebuild it within 50 feet of the creek, seems to me to be more logical and also easier to protect and easier to perpetuate than 50 feet, which doesn't seem to bear common sense in terms of what it would actually accomplish. Is there a way to amend that?
No, and actually, what's being required is that we increase it, not reduce it. So what we have right now is the 60-foot down to 50. And what I'm about to walk through is what is now being required by the state, where the city really doesn't have discretion, unfortunately. So, sorry, go ahead, okay.
There's a question and an answer.
Okay. Now I'll go into more detail, Mr. Larson, in just a moment. So the habitat protection for rivers and streams as it sits right now is taking a look in our critical areas ordinance now. And again, they are dovetailed, but they are two separate documents. And that's partly why this has become very complicated at the last portion of this 24 periodic review. So within the critical area regulations, which are in our Title 14, it talks about shorelines of the state, fish-bearing water bodies, or non-fish-bearing water bodies that are perennial, which means they're around all the time, or they're non-fish-bearing seasonal, which means the creek will come and go depending on time of year, et cetera. But that is talking about these types SFNP or NS. And if you go back to here, you'll see that's not how the shoreline master program is set up. It's talking about Conservancy, Natural, et cetera. So it's two different ways of addressing the different types of water bodies, which is causing a little bit of confusion right now, as I'll demonstrate shortly. What it says, though, in our current regs is that a buffer won't extend landward, excuse me, beyond an improved road, dike, levee, or permanent structure, which reduces impacts on either side on the river or stream. But then it says that the buffer width shall be set by the shoreline master program. And the shoreline master program is, again, it's not the fish-bearing or non-fish-bearing classifications. And so we need to do a little bit of cleanup here. What is being proposed as of now in the package before you for public hearing is significantly different. So first of all, no more are we talking about the Conservancy and Natural Park and whatever. We are going with the type F, fish-bearing, non-fish-bearing, or perennial or seasonal. But you'll see, if it's a fish-bearing water, it's 200-foot buffer. If it's non-fish-bearing perennial, so say Clover Creek, that's going to 100 feet. And if it's non-fish-bearing seasonal, a different map I'll show you in just a moment, which distinguished, it's also at 100 feet. So this is what's currently proposed. This is based on guidance that has come from the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And going back to these numbers, again, 40, 35 more feet, at least some of these areas, 100 feet in some of the other areas, different. So this is going to have significant effect on some property owners around our creeks and lakes. So here's a map that attempts to show partly why we're trying to raise awareness about this as much as we can right now. First of all, what you'll see here in the red, so for instance, Flett Creek, a little bit of Leech Creek at the top, Poncelion Creek is, are considered fish-bearing, according to the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Non-fish-bearing, you'll see some parts of the city, quite frankly, that right now, our shoreline master program does not regulate at all. So if there's a buffer that needs to be set, there's nothing in our shoreline master program saying what the buffer width would be. You have shorelines of the state, the dark blue, which would be through, I always get the lake names wrong, Lake Silicon, is that what that is? Yes, I'm sorry, into Clover Creek. Those are shorelines of the state, so they have a specific typing. And then you have the lighter blue, which you see here in a couple spots, that they don't know, because in part, they're underground, whether they are fish-bearing or not. So I'm going to go back and forth toggle a couple times between the two maps. If you just take a look here, what are the different stream or water body types? This is specific to streams on this map, where these different typings and resulting buffer widths are being proposed. And then if you go back to this one, you'll see, for instance, in this southwestern part of the city, none of those creeks are identified at all. And on Gravely Lake, the creeks that kind of lead into it are also not identified. And so again, we have a little bit of a hiccup with our regulations, to put it mildly, that these property owners at this point have no requirements on them. But this is going to, as it stands, have some new rules. The other thing, though, that we're looking at is not only, yes, we have to do this, but do we really have to do exactly what's in our current draft? And that's where this third option idea is coming from, that city staff is proposing, we bring to you within the next meeting. The current requirements or the current draft, excuse me, that's based, again, on the Fish and Wildlife guidance, is that in some of these areas, where we actually are planning for densification of housing, which is also a priority this time around, now we suddenly have these buffers being suggested, which have never been there before. So there will be some, how big, I couldn't tell you, but there would be some effect on the ability to densify housing. Probably more close to the heart of those who live around these lakes or along the creeks. This is obviously going to be a difference in what they're allowed to do on their property. And so looking again at the 200-foot distance from the water body, does that make sense here in Lakewood, which is a fully built-out urban area? Again, some of these, particularly on the west side of the city, are not included at all in our current shoreline master program. And then also, with these changes, we're not quite sure, but we can pretty clearly predict that this is going to negatively affect permit turnaround times. And another priority that the state has imposed on local government is we have to be even faster with our permit reviews. And so we're trying to figure out how we can answer both or all three, housing density, faster permit reviews, but also this increased buffer width, the analysis that might be required. But what you see down here is the comparison. So the lighter green, if I could point to a spot where it would be, it's, I know it's such a small picture of the creeks, but the existing is 65, being proposed to go up to 100 feet. And then the other existing is 150, proposed to go to 200. So we've got a 35-foot difference for those spaces around the lakes and Clover Creek, going from 65 feet to 100, which is where we anticipate most of the concern to come from. What are we proposing as a city staff? Again, you have three options, or you have two options right now that I just mentioned, which is the taking the no action that we talked about as part of the SEIS options, meaning the city in this case could say, we are, we don't want to do these increased buffers, we're going to stick with the status quo. We'll tell you right now, that sets the city up for liability, it violates best available science requirements and the Growth Management Act. So the second one would be to take those recommended buffer widths as they stand. And then the third option, which the city is working on right now, is to talk about how to improve both the shoreline master program and the critical areas ordinance. First of all, to clarify how these buffers are regulated and where they're regulated. So instead of having these two documents so combined and so interrelated, separating some things out for clarity. But also looking at, instead of the guidance from WDFW, which is not the same as a requirement or statute, it's, these are recommendations, looking at if what we have to do is no net loss of ecological function, how is the creek or lake functioning right now for the flora and fauna that are around it? How healthy is the water body? What can we do within the city that might not require those large buffers, at least in some cases, and still achieve that no loss of ecological function? So the city is looking at what Pierce, Kitsap, and Clark Counties have done, addressing the same question. And we are also looking at the language within the state law that really says, this is what you have to do, and order to provide you with a third option for consideration as part of this process.
Mr. Larson?
How is this different from my idea of shortening the buffers on Clover Creek? Because this appears to give us the ability to do that.
What we are seeing?
Number three.
Yeah, the difference that I haven't gotten there, let's see if I've got it, here we go.
If I'm ahead of me.
No, you're fine, you're fine. But to get right to your question, this on top are the distances of the buffers that is in the current draft, because it's based on the Fish and Wildlife guidance.
Right.
The middle is what is the current shoreline master program buffer distances, which, as I've mentioned, A, are in different categories that don't jive anymore, and also are less than what you see here. The bottom is what we are thinking as the city, we will bring to you as a recommendation. So this would be reducing the 200-foot buffer down to 100 feet for the type F waters. And then the non-fish-bearing streams, be they perennial or seasonal, having that go to 100 feet. The question we're still working on is whether that could be addressed and maybe reduced further with buffer enhancement, like you can do right now, taking it from 65 to 50.
Okay, so it's an open question.
Well, what I'm trying to get at for you, I think, Mr. Larson, is that it's not, we can reduce Clover Creek. It's going to go up, it's just by how much? And between going from 65 feet to 100, can any of that be brought to some point in between 65 and 100? That's the question we're still working on.
And you see, there's no argument with the state of Washington, because their rule is gospel, and we have to go by it no matter what, or to get our public funding through the state and with that lever? Is that the idea?
Where we're at right now as a jurisdiction, as we have been told through statute, these are the types of buffer widths you have to have, based on best available science. The 65 feet doesn't work anymore, and the 150 feet in the guidance doesn't work anymore. What we have to do is follow the best available science, but we can have a little bit of wiggle room where it's guidance versus you shall. And so that's where we're trying to come up with the third option for the city. But this is going to require increased buffers around the lakes and the stream, or the creek, I should say.
Okay, new question, why isn't Clover Creek shoreline residential? Because that's what it is, just like it is around the lakes, houses close to the water.
This was the result of the 2019 shoreline master program process. I think if you were to look at the urban stream versus the shoreline residential actual regulations, they would be very similar. But what you have is that they just called the lake shoreline residential, and then they called the Clover Creek area urban stream protection.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is the function is very, very similar.
Yeah.
Why don't we name it what it is?
Yeah, yeah. But that's what was adopted five years ago, so.
Okay. Does anyone have?
So it's given.
Mr. Herr?
Ms. Spear, so.
Ms. Spear, so, a couple of questions, point of clarity, the word buffer, there's three, three words that I feel like are kind of being used interchangeably here, is that accurate? We're, we're talking about setback, buffer, and all that. Is there any difference in those three terms? Are we all talking about the same thing with all three of those terms?
Buffers and setbacks do have different meanings, but buffer can have different meanings in and of itself. So I am purposely being kind of vague, because we don't have the third option to provide you in detail. But setbacks, you can do things, I'll be really crass and, and general about this, if you have a house, and it's nowhere near water, it's just a house on a lot. Say you have a setback from your neighbor's house of 20 feet. You could put a fence in that 20 feet, but you can't put your house in that 20 feet. If it was a buffer to a creek, you couldn't necessarily put the fence in there either, it is a no-build zone. So you could do maybe some vegetation there as a separator, but not as, not a fence or a part of your house.
Right.
The buffer enhancement that we've been talking about, in theory, if they said you have this, this 10-foot or 20-foot distance, that might drop down to 15, if you did something extra special to make the buffer more healthy and protect the water body better.
About it, message received there. My next question is, if we are increasing these zones and effectively taking the property owner's ability to fully enjoy that dirt, essentially, that they've purchased at a certain value, that seems kind of arbitrary. Is there some type of a backend compensation to those property owners who are essentially losing value of their, of their usable space?
No, because this is environmental protection, which is by the state considered to be a priority. There is always a exemption for reasonable use, is what the term is.
Okay.
So if you are on a residential property, and say, by whatever circumstance, you were within a, a place where the buffer, if you left it alone and just said it's 100 feet, you couldn't do anything at all in that parcel, you couldn't build a house on it, you would have an exemption, a reasonable use exemption, to yes, you can build a house on it. There would still be some buffer distance required, but you're never going to be in a situation as a property owner of not being able to do anything at all. Is that going to satisfy what you thought you got when you bought that property? Probably not. You thought you could do more things closer to the water, maybe? But the way the rules are, environmental protection is important enough in Washington, where that's, that's where the law sits.
Sure. And then, one other question in, in here, in this space is, and I'm thinking about American Lake, which is heavily, heavy boat traffic, right? Lots of docks, lots of, what's the, the term is escaping mean bulkhead? Right? How is this, how, or does this have any impact on maintenance to bulkheads or ability to modify existing structures for current property owners? And maybe like, a, a scenario that was posed to me recently was replacing a dock that may be functional, but may be aesthetically unpleasing, or, you know, fill in the blank for whatever reason. Are there, you, you mentioned the permit process, do those type of functions fit into this framework well? And are, are they, are we thinking about that, or is, or how does that piece work?
Now, as it stands, without taking any action on any of the stuff we've been talking about tonight, both in the critical area regulations and also in the shoreline master program, but particularly in the SMP, there are rules regarding bulkheads and other shoreline uses, hard armoring, et cetera, to where, for the last 10, 15 years, there have been limits on the type of improvements with a dock, a pier, or a bulkhead that can be done. This doesn't change necessarily those rules. We're talking about the distance of that buffer really is the big deal for this update. But to go into a little more of your question, what has been done with state law on down is, what maybe you built in 1970, or 1980, or 1990 even, as your bulkhead or as your pier, you probably can't replace like for like, except in very limited circumstances.
That's where I was going. So if there's an existing thing there, we're not going to require that it be ripped out,
No, no, no.
But nobody can come back in over that buffer space and, and replace if it's inside of that.
What they would, what they would be able to do, and forgive me if I misspeak this tonight, but from what I understand our code to read, you could replace or repair, but it would have to follow the current rules, which might not allow what you have there now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lenhome?
Yeah, can you please give us, can you please give us a couple more examples of buffer enhancements, what those might look like?
It could be, if you have a buffer that's without a lot of vegetation, if it's gravelly, dirty, nothing, no grass, no shrubbery, no trees, no ways to break human habitation and pollution into the water body, adding vegetation to add, to do that, or adding, for instance, bio-retention, so low-impact development, a rain garden, where instead of things just running off your property into a creek, it's staying on-site and getting filtered through that bio-garden, that would be an enhancement. Or if you've done something in the past where, because of a remodeling project, you dug out part of what used to be there, maybe replacing it again, again, that kind of idea of landscaping, but really having a mind of, how does this protect the nearby water body, is what we're talking about.
Is it often erosion mitigation?
It can be, but it could just be, not necessarily erosion, it could just be runoff from your driveway that could go unimpeded into the, the creek, versus again, like a bio-retention process.
Thank you.
Bell?
I have a question on the map with the fish-bearing stream, yeah. So I guess in our current plan, it appears that there are no protections for fish-bearing streams, but really, or I guess, buffer requirement. So I think my question is, partial, it's twofold. I mean, the data that, that, the, on the previous map that you just showed, how has that been validated, I guess, by any entity outside of Fish and Wildlife? Because I guess I'm, on one hand, I, what strikes me is the disconnection of several of the little unknown lines and the fish-bearing lines. And so my presumption is that either part of, those are older water bodies that flow underneath, either through culverts or some underground structures. So I wondered if the city has or is looking to validate the data as we see it here?
We're going to do the best that we can right now with, with the consultant we have hired, to clarify and make sure we're 100% sure what's required versus what's guidance, and also the accuracy, because you're correct. For instance, Poncelion Creek, right now, right next to, I'll do it again, Lake Stillicum, we don't have that on our map at all. And then again, in the areas over to the west, you see some quote, "fish-bearing streams" with buffers being required that aren't identified at all in our shoreline master program at this point. So we need, yeah, we need to make 100% sure that what Fish and Wildlife is putting out there is what we can verify and validate.
And I guess the second comment is really just a comment, and that is that, at least for now, for, with the information that we've, that's in front of us tonight, for me, what strikes me, what's the most striking is, I think, the, or at least the priority, if there is any, or attention on the fish-bearing streams and maintaining the functionality of at least those streams. So I guess my question is kind of a comment, or vice versa, but that is like, is there a way to approach the crafting of regulations incrementally, so that, so that in the, in the plan revisions, there's, you know, there's priority towards, or priority towards the fish-bearing streams, but then, at some point in time, amendments can be made to lesser functional, or lesser functional creeks?
I think I understand your, your question. It, it sounds like what you're saying is, let's make sure that we are protecting fish-bearing streams, but the other ones that are not, not fish-bearing, take a look at maybe the practical reality on the ground, and what development is there, whether there's seasonal or perennial, and those, those regulations might come later, or they might be adapted? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay. What we are trying to do with the position the city is, is drafting right now, and so this is all subject to change, is to say, first and foremost, under the Growth Management Act, we are an urban area, not only are we urban, we are a, a incorporated city. And this, we are a regional growth center, we are where people are supposed to be coming with their houses and with their development. And as a result, pre-incorporation, that happened, but now with incorporation, we are being asked to continue to densify. How, and we would argue it's impossible, can you try to now, on top of that, do everything that's included in the guidance coming from Fish and Wildlife? The type of buffers that are being proposed in their guidance is just not realistic, given the built-out nature of the city. And if what we're talking about is no net loss of ecological function, if you were to look at June 12, 2024's ecological function, this is not pristine ground that is going to get changed and affected by growth. This is a built-out area with a certain function level. And so what we're saying is, with our code, with this other option, we're hopefully going to get to you by the 26th, but maybe later, we are saying, we're going to protect the current function. We're not going to try to go back to undeveloped property, because realistically, practically speaking, that's impossible. So that's where we're coming from with, with our city recommendation.
Mr. Herr?
Ms. Spear, another question I've come to mind in a recent scenario, is just kind of jumping out at me on Lake Stillicum, with, I don't know that this is necessarily tied to setbacks, but property lines come in to the conversation. When property is changing hands as we move forward, and have we, do we know how many properties are affected by that 150 to 200-foot change? I mean, these houses, I, there's some houses that are very close to the water, I don't know necessarily what those distances are, but 50 feet is considerable. So if we move, and if we move this back, and now we've created a scenario where we have a residence that's inside of that zone, and then that property owner goes to sell its, sell that property, and now the residence is over the line, what does that mean to that potential buyer and that potential seller?
Yep, all very good questions. I can't answer them specifically for you this evening, but you're right, and this is part of the city's concern, is with this increased buffer width on any of these types of streams, but particularly the fish-bearing and the shorelines of the state, it could be not just one parcel deep, it could be multiple parcels deep, and it could be, it will be affecting parcels that have not been affected before. So trying to understand and, and get the word out and make sure our regulations reflect what we have to do versus what is recommended is number one, but number two, trying to make sure that we are informing people as best we can right now, to say, these are the changing rules. And then the third part, in terms of property value, again, we end up ultimately, worst-case scenario, with the reasonable use exemption. If you have a situation where you have less available use on a property, that will affect tax assessment and property value, if you were to try to sell, I don't know what else to say other than that. It, it's not the best news, I, I don't understand, yeah.
Can you, can you talk about a reasonable use exemption? Like, what does that look like? Does that, does that sound like, hey, your property's over the line, you can still live in this house, but you cannot make any additional improvements? Or does that potentially look like, yeah, you can buy this property, but guess what? This house is over the line, and you can't use that now?
If, no, you're not going to be told you can't use it now. It would be, if you're building a, a site, and you're going to scrape what's on it and build, you will be required to stay out of the buffer.
Certainly.
If you have a house that is on a property and is in this new buffer, you would be able to remodel perhaps away, opposite distance on the house, you would not be able to build further and deeper into the buffer if you were to want to expand. So it will limit what you can do, it will not say you can't do anything at all.
Thank you.
The properties that are currently there would then be considered conditional use?
Um, I think they're not considered conditional use, they would still be a legal use, but they will just be restricted in terms of any sort of change in footprint.
Okay. Mr. Larson?
I might add that it's pretty common in zoning and, and land use function and law, that when a change like this occurs, that the footprint can't be expanded upon, but the existing use, even within that footprint, which includes sometimes going up, is, is very, very commonly accomplished.
In comes Bell.
I just want to ask one more question, and that is, are any of the properties along, or adjacent to the, any water body on these now, on this map now, are they subject to, like, Army Corps of Engineer permit review? Or review for a, for a permit?
If you're talking about like, a, an NPDES permit, or you're talking about something different?
Like a, like a bulkhead permit.
They may be, because they would be now. And if you're on any of the lakes or any of these creeks that are currently discussed, sorry, on this map here, you would have to have that, you'd just follow the rules, and, and there may be the need for bulkhead permit and analysis by agencies outside of the city. What we end up with, with this map, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's, that's really what I was trying to-
Yeah.
-kind of poke at, is if, if this map, or a version of this map, is the future, what does that mean for additional, what does that mean for permits that are subject to review, especially by Army Corps of Engineers? Because I, I have, I used to work for the City of Bonny Lake in permit bulkhead permits, and they were subject, and that is not a fast review.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the other thing we're trying to deal with, is the new state requirement to have faster and more predictable permits, at the same time, this is being required, makes very hard balancing priority. Yes, so, taking your question, and we'll try to get you an answer next time.
Thank commissioners for their questions and comments, Ms. Spear, please.
Okay, so as I mentioned, we have hired a consultant working with us to develop a background report that would support this idea of a third option. And I'm sorry, I can't give you more details about that third option tonight, but in two weeks, I, I will be able to do that. We have mailed out physical mailers to all of the property owners along all of these creeks and lakes, so they may be here in two weeks for you, with their testimony and with their questions. We will try, on the staff side, to provide a, a good enough introduction or continued conversation from tonight, that at least some of those answers can be provided that night. But we may, again, have to come back to you on July 10th with some additional answers to questions that are asked as part of the public hearing. But all of that should be in front of you before the July 10th discussion that you would have. So we talked about this already, but again, these are kind of the three different things. The, the way it's encouraged under WDFW, and what is in the draft right now is this 200, and then 100. What's currently in the shoreline master program is significantly different. What we're trying to work for with the draft recommendation that we're prepping is the 150 versus 2, and then the 100-foot may or may not be adjustable, I just don't know yet, it depends on what we get out of our additional analysis. I will also note that we are going to come to you after the big package is done, with a couple of other tweaks to the shoreline master program strictly related to this. The SMP is something that also gets reviewed every five, or every 10 years, but it's not part of the same time as what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. So we're doing a very, very strict, very, very limited and restricted update to the shoreline master program, just in relation to its relation, or its interaction with the critical areas ordinance. So that will be in front of you, probably in September, October timeframe, to talk about. Coming back to public comments, we do have 17 sets of comments that have come in since the opening of the public hearing. I'm assuming you will get more, again, in part because of this buffer discussion we've been having. And all of these will be answered by the July 10th packet, which you would get at least a week ahead of time. And other than that, anyone who needs to access any of this information, this is the website, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview/. So that's my presentation, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, any comments, questions for Ms. Spear? No? Thank you, Ms. Spear. Moving on to the next item is new business, do we have any new business this evening?
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Larson?
I'd like to open for discussion- Uh I'd like to open for discussion uh two points. Uh the first would be uh the the uh combination of the two zones that we have between Durango and South Tacoma Way and north of Stilicon Boulevard and south of Eightieth Street, which is where the former BNI is. And uh that property has two zones that are separate in the middle. If we remove that separation and combine them into one uh consistent zone, then that allows for a better, more balanced development uh in the future and use of a lot of unused land that's in there because it's trapped by what's built on the streets. And uh if we were able to incorporate that, we'd be able to have uh um any number of uh commercial services that would have larger buildings and uh better traffic flow instead of having a whole bunch of uh driveways on and off of both Durango and uh South Tacoma Way. Uh it just seems to make more sense to make that so it can work better in the future. So I'll be sending a memorandum to everybody and ask your comments and then we'll uh and and be sending memorandum to uh Ms. Spear to uh to discuss that uh as well.
Uh along that line, Ms. Spear, so if it comes from you all, then it's not considered a meeting, but if it comes from Mr. Larson, it's considered a meeting?
Uh yes, so Mr. Larson should send things to me.
We'll send it to her. Okay.
Let's look at it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you.
And uh with background information on make it a little more clear what you're proposing?
Yes, and uh I'll have some illustrations with it as well. And uh and uh I don't exactly have an idea as to what that co- combination zone should be called. But I do have some ideas about the breadth of uses that I see uh would be examples of the kind of thing we could expect in that area.
This is not considered part of the comprehensive plan, then is it?
There's a couple of ways that the commission could address this. So if Mr. Larson comes to the commission with a proposal, um first and foremost, it could be uh just a strict amendment to what is in front of you right now. So it could be a change to a regulation, a change to a zone, a change to what's allowed in a zone that you could say, we're going to add this to the package and forward it to council. Another option to the commission would be to say, we are going to include a recommendation to the city council that this be taken up as a future action, um which would mean it would probably get incorporated in the twenty twenty five cycle. We're calling for applications for that in the month of July of this year. Uh and then the third would be um recommending that not waiting for a comprehensive plan cycle, but to do something separate and apart. So do it right now as part of this package, do it as part of next year's comp plan package, or do it as its own review and analysis. I will tell you that uh the capacity of the department to try to pick this up as the breadth of what he's talking about right now is probably not going to be able to happen in the twenty four package. It would need to be its own thing, or it would need to be part of next year's um package that we talk about.
I I don't see that as an impediment. I think, you know, some, these are reasonably substantive changes. They deserve thought and time and interaction and so um it's, it probably is more appropriate that it go to twenty twenty five as well.
Okay.
Uh the second perspective that I have is that uh we have two different zones that do very, very similar things, and I think that they should be combined, and that is the Springbrook area, everything that's on the uh south side of Interstate Five and the Union Station District area. Uh the both uh have very, very similar land uses and land availabilities and requirements for improvement. Uh and we're already seeing some uh improvement. We have seen improvement on the Springbrook side with uh new apartments taking place of old uh with a new industrial building being built there with uh a uh a kidney center, a commercial kidney center there and uh apartments and single family residential and and uh Meandering Creek and a couple of parks. And uh to me, that area is currently separated off from the rest of the city and in its own different place. And I'd like to see it to be a cohesive part of uh City of Lakewood. When we uh look at the station district, uh and I'm just going to pick a hundred and eighth as the northerly uh border of of that uh what what seems to me land use similarity. We've got the hospital, we've got apartments, we've got uh a couple of industrial uses. The station itself is an industrial use, the fire station is an industrial use. And uh so it uh it it bears a lot of similarity, the type of residential it is, the need for increased density and uh all for the good reason of being close and proximate and functional with the station district and the station itself to provide more efficient transportation and uh and better jobs and things like that for all the citizens that interact uh based on the station. Uh Interstate Five is an interruption, but it is certainly uh uh easy to overcome as well. So the uh I'm certainly open to questions uh at this time of any of you. Uh but that is what I'll be sending to Ms. Spear for uh sending out.
Would you say that the criteria for this joining as such is the same criteria that we use for uh Stilicon and Woodbrook?
Uh the sim- the similarity uh of function of combining uh Woodbrook with uh Stilicon uh to be part of the City of Lakewood, uh yes. Uh but Woodbrook is a very decidedly different little set of land uses than Stilicon has. That has been some of the question as to why are they doing that? But uh I believe that you can have dissimilar uses in that situation uh because uh it's all part of the City of Lakewood. So the jobs that are extant in Woodbrook uh can enhance the residential that is uh uh Stilicon. And so they can be, they are through some synergy between the two, but they aren't as much the same uh as uh as what I'm proposing.
Springbrook and Lake and the station. Okay. Comments?
Okay.
Well, we look forward to the uh to Ms. Spear sending us the information regarding both your uh your options.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Spear, do we have anything else on a new business?
Excuse me.
Ms. Larson, one more time.
There's one other thing. Uh one, we recently saw a uh an an area overlay uh for economic development uh from uh Lakewood Town Center uh on down Gravelly Lake Drive to allow for uh some funding capabilities uh for development. And uh that uh that economic zone went across Gravelly Lake Drive uh to the south, and it appears to me to be for no good reason. So I'm going to be suggesting that that uh also be amended to uh to to make the arterials the uh dividing points between the uh for the economic zone uh rather than an arbitrary line that went down and dissects properties, et cetera.
I'm sorry, are you speaking about the multifamily tax exemption that
Yes.
was recently
Yes.
brought back to us, but if I recall, that's not something we're going to look at at this time.
No, that's that's a different package. That'll be in front of you in September, October as well.
Okay, okay, I withdraw my comment.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? And Ms. Spear, we have no further business. Our next steps, uh I asked our counsel, Laeson, Mr. Bokey. Nothing for us this evening? Ms. Spears, we have anything else on the agenda?
Uh no, uh just again, continued thanks to you for addressing this very large legislative package. Uh and a reminder again, we're on this weird schedule because of holidays and closures. So two weeks from tonight, so June twenty sixth would be your next meeting. That will be another evening of public comment potentially, and I would anticipate having some based on what we've been talking about regarding buffers. And then July tenth, so not uh the first week, but the second week in July is when your your meeting would there would happen. If you take action that night, there would be no other meetings for the rest of July or in August. But if you need it, there's certainly time to schedule additional meetings before you take action on this package.
Any comments? Any other comments? No?